We call this meeting to order. First, we got the invocation by John McIntyre for Rysel Beach Baptist Church.
Such an honor to be able to live in a nation where we can pray freely, and I thank you for the opportunity. God, lift up our commissioners to you tonight and our local leadership. Lord, thank you for such an amazing place to call home. Would you continue to fill, my friends here tonight, our leadership from highest to lowest, even our first responders and those who serve our county so well? Lord, would you fill them with discernment, with wisdom, with grace, with mercy? Would you, would you order every step for them, God, that they would pursue your will imposed on their heart, God, as they lead this county in our best interest as we pursue you together, Lord? It's encracing me. Amen.
Please place the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five of you. The Consideration of National Public Health Week proclamation read by Mr. Commissioner Barfield.
Good morning, John Campbell, our health director to the podium. Good afternoon, John.
Good afternoon, sir.
Nice to see you today.
Likewise.
It's been an honor serving on the Health Human Services Board with you for the past several years and appreciate the great work that you do for our community. And with that, I'll read this proclamation. Public Health Week proclamation. Whereas the week of April 1st through 7th, 2024 is recognized as the National Public Health Week in the basis of theme of protecting, connecting, and thriving where all public health. And whereas this year emphasizes the crucial role of community engagement in enhancing public health outcomes, underscoring the collective effort required to fortify public health, infrastructure, and community resilience. And whereas public health is essential in securing clean air and water, safe and nutritious foods, and equitable access to health services, thereby fostering community well-being. And whereas initiatives in the public health that address infectious diseases, promote environmental cleanliness, and advocate for the healthy living significantly improve the health of the county. And whereas ensuring health equity is at the forefront of the county's public health strategy and knowledge that all community members deserve equal access to the conditions and resources necessary for optimal health irrespective of their background or circumstances. And whereas the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners renews its commitment to prioritizing public health and with a special focus on bridging health disparities and fostering an inclusive environment where every resident can thrive. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that April 1st through 7th, 2024, we recognize as Public Health Week in New Hanover County, adopted this first day of April, 2024, where you arrive at our chair. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, thank you very much for considering the proclamation for Public Health Week. I want to say here in New Hanover County, we employ more than 200 individuals that are directly working with public health. However, as the proclamation shares, we are all public health. What that means is while we may work directly in environmental health, communicable diseases, health promotions, and health education, there are so many other variables that impact our health and well-being. Everything from our parks and gardens to the services we provide our community. So while we are 200 strong here in New Hanover County, we are much more than that with the great extent that everyone plays in public health. And I want to, if I could, I just want to take a moment and recognize some of the public health colleagues that are here with us. If you won't mind standing, I want to thank you for my appreciation.
Any discussion? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Five of you. Consideration of Black Maternal Health Proclamation. Mr. Sappel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Consideration of the Black Maternal Health Proclamation. Vaughn, I think you're up, and we'll give you a chance to make some remarks as soon as we read the proclamation. New Hanover County Board of Commissioners, Black Maternal Health Proclamation. Whereas the mission of New Hanover County is to provide equitable opportunities and exceptional public services through good governance to ensure a safe, healthy, secure, and thriving community for all. And the mission of New Hanover County Health and Human Services is to provide services and support that promote self-reliance, prevent adverse experiences, and protect the community. And whereas in accordance with these missions, it is critical to highlight the significance of health equity throughout the entire community with a particular focus on Black Maternal Health Week from April 11th to the 17th. This week should emphasize the importance of ensuring black women have access to high-quality health care catering to their individual needs. And whereas maternal health is a key component of societal, communal, and familial well-being, and whereas black women continue to face significant disparities and grievances in maternal health outcomes, including elevated rates of maternal mortality, severe maternal morbidity, and adverse birth outcomes in comparison to women of other racial backgrounds. This is evident not only in New Hanover County, North Carolina, but also on a national scale as reported by the National Institutes of Health and North Carolina Health News. And whereas according to data from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention and the National Center for Health Statistics in southeastern North Carolina, the mortality rate for black infants before their first birthday is twice as high as that of their counterparts. And whereas to achieve health equity and maternal health outcomes, the underlying factors leading to these disparities, such as social determinants of health, cultural, and other biases, and additional challenges must be addressed. And whereas providing black women with comprehensive support services, culturally competent health care personnel, and high-quality prenatal care is critical for supporting healthy pregnancies and birthing experiences. And whereas Black Maternal Health Week honors the lives of black women and their families, promotes policies, procedures, programs, and services that ensure equitable maternal health outcomes, acknowledges and amplifies their experiences and perspectives, and brings attention to the critical need to address maternal health disparities within our black community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners designates the week of April 11th through the 17th, 2024, as Black Maternal Health Week, adopted this first day in April, 2024, by the hand of William E. Reivenbar Chair. Vaughn, the platform is yours.
Thank you. As of 2021, data from the North Carolina Center for Health Statistics reveals a concerning statistic for New Hanover County. The county ranks among the top 20 counties in North Carolina for black infant death rates with a rate of 29.1%, nearly 30%. That means that nearly 30% of infant deaths in the county are among black infants. It is crucial to note that the black population in New Hanover County constitutes only 13% of our total population. This is, this statistic underscores significant racial disparities in infant mortality rates within the county. Fifty years ago to this month, in 1974, Shirley Chisholm had a conversation with Congressman Jerry Litten of Missouri and stated, "People from various areas do not always empathize with the plight of the other, not because of resentment or a kind of detachment, but because there is an ignorance of the situation." What is needed is people who embrace compassion and concern and are not afraid to educate each other about the inequities and grievances in the system. If you love anything or anybody, you don't sweep the negative issues under the proverbial rug, but you have the courage, audacity, and nerve to be counted and to stand up and talk about the things that, talk about the things so that together we can have dialogue and reason. Today, my good commissioners, you have the courage, audacity, and nerve to stand and be counted to improve black maternal health outcomes. For that, I sincerely thank you. Our community partners who are here to support black maternal health, would you please stand? Thank you.
Vaughn, I want to thank you for the great work that you are doing. I don't think she'll mind me saying this, but my oldest daughter, who gave me my first grandson last year, who also worked in health equity at Novant New Hanover Regional Medical Center, made sure she had a doula as she went through the whole process of having a child. And made sure that she had the best of the best of the best there with folks that were compassionate and understood her situation to make sure that her child would be born and thriving well. Now I have two grandchildren, a five-month-old and a one-year-old, and it's a great thing to see, you know, the emphasis, but we recognize the need to make sure that folks are attentive to these kids in particular. So I appreciate the work that Health Human Services is doing, your department with health equity within DSS and the Health Department, and it's the stance that we're all taking in, making sure that every voice is recognized and that we lose no children as they're being born. Thank you. I make a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Five of you. Picture. Going up. Honorable Judge Corbin, also known as?
Batman.
Batman.
What a great way to walk into a room. And what a wonderful day in this room. You know, we were all able to be here earlier celebrating Wanda Copley and her fabulous career. She joined the county a year after I went on the bench. So I've been here for the whole journey. And what a special journey that's been, then to be back for the chair's State of the County address. And then to be here in front of the five of you, to be able to talk about the work of our Community Child Protection Team. Great day for me personally to live and work in New Hanover County. So I'd like to invite our Community Child Protection Team partners who are in the room to stand before I, before I begin, because there are a number of them who are here in And Mr. Chair, there is one action item at the end of my report, the approval of the at-large members recommended by the committee that we'll need to address. So a lot going on this year affecting children. I'll spend just a few minutes on accomplishments that our team has worked on through this year. Training was provided to Foster Parent Association, Smart Start, school nurses, social workers' guidance counselors, all the student support services folks, UNCW nursing students, and Coastal Horizons on how to recognize, respond, and report child abuse and neglect. How sad is it that we still have to talk about how to recognize and report child abuse and neglect, but we do? And we're making every effort every year to make sure that the folks who are intersecting with our children know what they're seeing and know how to report it. We have monthly Community Child Protection Team case reviews. We reviewed 10 complex child welfare cases so that our multidisciplinary group can come together, put our brains together, see what gaps there are, and try to identify services to address any barriers to those children and those families. Partners of our team were provided with program presentations from the Healthy Opportunities Pilot, Safe Babies Court, which is a new pilot starting here. We've already started doing the groundwork. We're hoping to start holding sessions in May. That's a state pilot. Port City United, Casey Family Programs, and Medicaid Expansion. And then we've continued to do community education on safe sleep issues. You know, safe sleep made the news again recently. Babies continue to die from safe sleep issues in our county. And we are being as diligent as we can be in education. Novant is, public health is, everybody is trying to educate, and we still have issues. We've got to continue to be diligent. Just wanted to report out to you that we're doing our part to try to make sure that new families understand the seriousness of the issue and the risk to their babies of unsafe sleep. So addressing some of the barriers we've seen over the year, we continue to see lack of consistent, accessible, effective mental health and developmental disability services. And I'll say at the outset that we look forward over the next few years to seeing what the infusion of capital from the county through the mental health funding that you have through the sale of the hospital and the opioid settlement can do to help address this. It is still a significant issue for the children in our DSS population and children in our community in particular, especially those who have serious needs. There's a mental health therapist for kids who suffer anxiety or any number, depression, other disorders, but our kids who have more serious mental health issues have their needs often unmet. Sadly, we've had some stay in our juvenile detention facility much longer than appropriate. They can't go home, they can't safely be in the community, and there are no placements available for them. If you haven't toured that facility, I'd urge you to do it. And then imagine what it's like being there for months, especially when you're in isolation because of your mental health. So difficulty in accessing inpatient treatment for stabilization. There is a new, good news on the horizon is there's a new pilot to address this particular need in Lenore County that's operated by Department of Public Safety, but it's only going to address a few beds. It's an ongoing issue. There remains to be difficulty accessing therapeutic placements and psychiatric residential treatment within North Carolina. What we see is that we have what's known as PRTFs in North Carolina, and they cherry-pick their patients. So they pick the most well-behaved kids with disabilities that qualify, and then we're left with our kids who are the most seriously in need of those, of those treatment resources, and they're turned down. That's a terrific barrier. There remain limitations for coverage by both Medicaid and private insurance, although Medicaid expansion did happen. We're hoping that that has a significant impact on this unmet need as well as some of our other unmet needs with loss of coverage. For example, with our parents who lost Medicaid coverage because their children came into care, barriers to treatment were created, and we're hoping Medicaid expansion can help address that. And then there are limited accessible services for caregivers and children with co-occurring mental health and developmental disabilities in particular. So this group has been great on advocacy, and we urge you as a Community Child Protection Team to continue your advocacy for expansion of private insurance coverage, for example, for enhanced mental health services. Some of the folks, some of the issues that our folks run into is they've got private insurance coverage, and they go, and there's a limitation, a significant limitation on the amount that can be paid during the entire life of the policy, which creates a huge barrier, particularly when you look at the cost of some of our inpatient treatment facilities that can be significant. One that I looked at recently was $2,000 a day. That's pretty significant. And when you've got limitations on coverage, then that's a significant barrier. We ask that you encourage private providers to expand their capacity for therapeutic placements for children and encourage community members to become licensed foster parents. You know, we've got, our, our DHHS team does such a great job in partnership with the county of promoting foster care, promoting folks becoming licensed foster parents. You know, we used to have over 500 kids in care. We don't now. We still don't have enough foster placements. Thank God for relatives who step up, but we still have issues. We still have kids who spend the night in Tonya Jackson's conference room at the DHHS building. How fair is that to children? So we need that continued push to recruit folks to be foster parents. We need, I mentioned a youth crisis facility that's open, opening in Lenore. We need something local to address stabilization and crisis for assessment and stabilization to prevent youth from inappropriately lingering in emergency departments, for example. Do you know what happens when they linger in emergency departments? They're chained to their bed. They're not like you and I when we go and linger in the emergency department. They're chained to a bed, and they've often got a guard with them, whether it's a juvenile justice person or law enforcement. Hadn't happened since this past weekend that I know of. That's a challenge and incredibly unfair to our kids who are going through psychiatric crises. And then we ask that you continue to advocate to increase the number of local mental health providers who accept Medicaid and provide services to meet the needs of both youth and adults with dual diagnoses. So, you know, we don't hear about it much anymore. We heard a little bit about it earlier today and the manager's remark in particular, Wanda Copley's celebration about the opioid crisis, right? The opioid crisis is still real, and we still have people dying. It's not in the news anymore. You don't hear about it. The numbers continue to climb actually, not drop. It is still a significant issue, and we have children continuing to be impacted by the opioid crisis. And, and it's a significant contributory factor in child maltreatment, you know? Substance misuse and mental health continue to be the leading two reasons for children being removed from their parents in our county and across the state and country. And it results in children being neglected and unsupervised, substance-affected newborns. I don't know if any of you have ever seen a neonatal abstinence syndrome baby. I've not seen one in person. I've got a video of one from Tennessee. It's heart-wrenching to see what their little bodies go through through withdrawal. Children ingesting improperly-stored medications and illegal substances. Do you think that I want to come out of my seat in that room across the street that I work when I've got a toddler testing positive for cocaine? That's where that judicial temper, instead of judicial temperament, wants to fly, right? Because that can't be. And it's not just cocaine. It's other substances as well. DSS comes to me and says, "We need to drug test a toddler." And I know why. Because coffee table that's this tall has controlled substances on it, and toddlers are into everything. Granddad, you're, you're on the verge of learning all about that. Been, been, been there. And it's real in our homes, in our community. That's a horrible issue. Criminal activity in household and then parents going to jail, we, you know, Tonya Jackson's team gets called out in the middle of the night because of a drug bust, and the little kid's in the middle of it, right? And then parents go to jail, kids come to foster care. These are issues that we've got to continue working on as a community, addressing the opioid crisis. Once again, we're looking forward to monitoring the, the investment that New Hanover County is making in treatment resources. Let me, let me say on that point, right now, I've got folks in my caseload who are at safe place, at, at healing place and doing great. What a great resource to be able to say to a family, to, to a substance-affected parent who says, "I want help." There's a place on Medical Center Drive, it's free. We can get you a ride there. You've just got to have the willpower to stay and make it work. And I'm thrilled to say that it's working for some, and do you know that they're working with some of our families to actually facilitate visitation for some of those families too? So they can maintain that contact in a, in a really positive way in a place where they're receiving treatment. So good steps are being made in this direction. My point is, we've still got a lot of work to do. So we urge you to advocate for legislation mandating, and mandating improved oversight of medication providers. Not the first time I've mentioned that in this room. You've seen, and we've got some wonderful treatment providers in our county that provide wraparound services that these families need. That's not, not who I'm talking about. But you see the signs on the street corners, methadone and a phone number to call. They're for profit. They're about making money. And they'll say they're for treatment. But my experience is that the folks aren't being helped. So looking for help with oversight on some of that. Expanded capacity for family residential treatment where families can be together. Y'all have supported Skip Johnstone's project, The Tides. You know, he's opened one back up in his home county now. I've got, I've got women who are there now. And of course, Kelly House, Mary Kelly's dream that came true is still continuing to serve children and families, but we need more. The conversation in the room changes completely when a mom finds out that she's about to be able to place, be placed with her baby after her baby's been taken from her. That means that we are lighting that fire of hope. And if we can be hope dealers instead of dream crushers, we can change things. We can change things. And that's one of the areas where we can make change. Again, advocate for Medicaid and private insurance coverage to include childcare and transportation to treatment. Got some breakthroughs with one of the presentations that we heard, there's more transportation now that we've learned that's available in the community, but still need to advocate for expanded coverage. And then continue to educate our community about safe storage of prescription medication and illicit substances. I'm going to talk about safe storage of firearms in a minute, but safe storage of pills is every bit as important as safe storage of a firearm, because pills kill too. So we've got to continue to advocate that. Y'all've got a wonderful electronic billboard network. I watch them when I'm stopped in traffic, right? What a great way to get the message out, and it's important because pills do kill So Chair talked about affordable housing and investment that the city and the county are making, and I, our, our Community Child Protection Team commends those efforts. It's a monster problem. You know, in a community with an apartment complex on every corner, it's hard to imagine that there's not housing for everybody, but there's not. Because folks who are working those minimum wage jobs or who work a 30 or 32-hour week in a minimum wage job can't, can't afford housing. So workforce housing is a real issue. Commend you for your efforts and urge you to continue those efforts because the magnitude of that issue is huge. I'd invite you to be in the room with me sometime when I'm trying to keep the hope alive in a family, and the only barrier to reunification is having a place to sleep at night, can you imagine? No place to go home to, no place to lay their head, no place for their child to be with them, even though they're working. How terrible is that? And, and we know the economics of it with occupancy rate in, in this apartment complex is the rent's not going down. And so it's going to be developmental workforce housing that, that makes, makes it or breaks it. And lack of affordable, adequate housing causes all kinds of issues. You know, I wish I could tell you that kids don't come into care out of automobiles in New Hanover County, but they do. Live in a Walmart parking lot in a car. In our county. It's, it continues to be a monster issue. So keep, so first, keep up the good work that you're already doing. You know, staff is to be commended for bringing that to your attention. You guys are to be commended for continuing to pay attention to it. It's just an ongoing problem. This isn't just about the unhoused in our community. This is about people who are trying their best to live the American dream, to work and have a place for their children to stay, and they can't afford it, even though they're doing their best. We want to help people who are doing their best. There are other recommendations here, you know, perhaps advocating for some increased federal housing subsidies to help. You know, we've got a couple of good federal programs, but you, do you know that we can have some folks that, for example, qualify for the FUP program for housing voucher, and they can't find a house to spend it on that's afforded, affordable in New Hanover County? That's tough. And then make sure that residential areas do have access to critical resources such as grocery stores so that we don't have food deserts in this second smallest geographic county in North Carolina. There continue to be some service barriers for undocumented county, undocumented families, and I bring this to you every year because these families have children. and I bring this to you every year because these families have children. These children live in our community and God's children are all of our children and we need to make sure that services are available for all children. So, I told the manager that, that I was going to go off script at the end because Ben David and I were doing a presentation to the, to a pediatric symposium at Wrightsville Beach just a few weeks ago. And I was doing some updated research to try to give doctors some advice about what to do in their, in their rooms, right? And so, I, I read the Child Fatality Task Force report that went to the governor and the General Assembly in 2022. And, you know, even though anecdotally I'm able to talk about a lot of things that happened in our community, it took my breath away. And this is about North Carolina, not just about New Hanover County. Do you know what the leading cause of death of 15 to 18 year olds is in North Carolina? Or was in 2020? That's the data set they had. Homicide. You know, the third leading cause of death of 15 to 18 year olds in North Carolina in 2020 was? Suicide. Number one and three for 15 to 18 year olds. Let's move to 10 to 14 year olds. What do you think the leading cause of death of, and these are rhetorical questions, you don't have to answer because I read the study, I would not have guessed. My brain immediately went to what kind of cancer, but for 10 to 14 year olds, leading cause of death in North Carolina in 2020 was suicide. Third leading cause of death of 10 to 14 year olds in North Carolina in 2020 was homicide. So, I'm talking to pediatricians about, are you talking about gun safety in your rooms during child checkups? Because something over 60% of households that have handguns that have children in the home, the handguns are not secured. But our sheriff has handed out over 500 gun locks downstairs in the permitting office that we got as part of NC Safe Program, a DPS program. I was able to get 500 gun locks. Then I got four more, 400 more, and he's handing those out in two, and I've asked for 500 more. That's one way we can do it and the sheriff is all about that. Somebody walks in downstairs and says, is this the right office for permitting for something else other than a handgun? They'll say, no, that's not, but do you want a gun lock? They're doing their best, but public awareness has got to be heightened about this safety issue. Because, you know, we, we see the tragic stories of a five year old killing another kid in the home with dad's handgun that was left on the bedside table loaded and unlocked. It's so easy to secure a firearm. It's so easy to secure a pill. But I thought that data set was important to share with you and we're going to continue to, to monitor that data in our community child protection team because that's a gap that we've never thought about in those terms. But I shared with our health director before the meeting started, that's a public health crisis. If leading causes of death of our children are homicide and suicide, then we got issues to talk about. So, thank you very much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And Mr. Chairman, there is the one action item, only to the approval by our at-large members.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Lauren Daley, Amy Feath, Chris Preston, and Stephen Steele as at-large members.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Five a.
Thanks for your time today.
And Judge Corbin, I just want to thank you for your, your passion and commitment to the youth of our community. You didn't start this yesterday. You've been doing this work for a long time in partnership with the DSS to make sure that every child in our community is protected and has the best possibility of a positive outcome in life. And I just appreciate from the bottom of my heart, your commitment to the youth in our community. I'm not sure that many people recognize the work that you do and the things that you probably carry home with you and the stories that you carry home with you from some kids that have been abused in our community. But it's always good to know that Batman is right here, so I appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Every county ought to have a Batman working home.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Chris Crudry, county manager.
Commissioners, good evening. I want to begin by saying that I'm sorry we are here after March 21st in a shooting. I'm also disappointed that I'm having to offer you this particular report and the report to our community. It's unfortunate, but I also recognize it is significant. I intend to provide the board with a programmatic update about Port City United and more specifically the mediation and outreach function, most commonly known as our violence interrupters. As we're all aware, this report is necessitated by recent developments, specifically the shooting incident at Houston Moore on the evening of Thursday, March the 21st. A young member of our community is in serious condition at the hospital. Understandably, the circumstances surrounding this event have been challenging for everyone in our community, as well as members of our organization. We have, from the beginning and even now, continued directing our response with urgency and care. And I want to present to you this evening a public accounting of that response. As you know, Stephen Barnett, the supervisor for mediation and outreach of PCU, was implicated in the Houston Moore shooting and was subsequently arrested and charged with accessory to attempted murder after the fact. I had him put on administrative leave immediately the Thursday that the shooting occurred while we learned the details of the situation. And upon his arrest last Monday, he was dismissed from his role with the county. Additionally, you know, the city did take possession of a county van operated by PCU immediately after the shooting. The city released that van to a towing company on Friday afternoon and the county retrieved the van Monday morning. Because of the seriousness of this incident, I made the decision last Tuesday to administratively suspend the operations of mediation and outreach so that we could take a deeper look into the protocol, the processes, and the practices of that particular unit. I needed to know more about why things happened the way they did. At the time of the event and even today, I cannot explain why this tragic event happened and unfolded as it did. The mediation and outreach unit has 10 positions in total, including the one vacated by the former supervisor. Those staff are currently on paid administrative leave as we conduct a thorough review. Rashad Gaddison, PCU's director, has been a steadfast leader of his team and our organization throughout this situation and is working with his team daily to ensure the support, they have the support they need. None of this is easy for anyone. A fair question asked of me since the administrative suspension began is what is the decision or the cost to the county for this suspension? That's a fair question. It is $18,218 per bi-weekly pay period. I also note the other two primary functions of Port City United, the department, both PCU Connect and the Community Resource Coordinator Program, continue to operate, providing important services and support to our community. Our team is ensuring they also have the support they need to continue to do that important work. We believe PCU Connect and the Community Resource Coordinators have proven beneficial in meeting the community's needs, as evidenced by the Connect Center's call intake more than doubling since the beginning of this fiscal year. Additionally, the Community Resource Coordinators, working in 10 of our public schools, have also seen their monthly interactions with students double since the beginning of this school year. As county manager, I need to be able to assure you that we have every possible guardrail and procedure in place to help ensure our programs, whatever those programs may be, lead to safe, tangible, and positive outcomes for our community. I can offer no specific assurances regarding the mediation and outreach functions at this time. Therefore, those services remain suspended until further review by our leadership team and the policy direction from the Board of Commissioners. I believe it is important to restate why and how Port City United came to be a part of county government. It is not intended to be heard as defensive, but instead to offer a clear reminder that we proposed a far-reaching system of supports, services, and interventions with the goal to make our community safer and to reduce gun violence. That was and is the continued mission of Port City United. After a series of community meetings aimed at receiving input from numerous nonprofits, partner agencies, parents, and students themselves directly impacted by the shooting incident at New Hanover High School in August 2021, the county commission did establish Port City United in January of 2022 through the adoption of a comprehensive community building program. This department, coupled with those other community building efforts, started the work of connecting individuals and families with the resources they need, eliminating barriers to education and jobs, and building trusted relationships throughout our community. From these community building efforts, the county expanded pre-K in our public schools, created a partnership with Cape Fear Community College to help individuals complete trade and training programs, placed school resource officers in every school in our community, and expanded the Sheriff's Elements Program and Community Justice Services Too Good For Violence Program. The board increased its nonprofit capacity building, all designed together to make an impact and again, reduce violence in our community. I believe these advances and Port City United have done some incredibly important work in communities who need it most. I stand by those community building efforts and equally acknowledge the difficult situation we find ourselves. As county manager, I serve the Board of Commissioners and will help facilitate board discussion and review as we navigate the future of the Port City United Department and/or any services associated with the community building program. Now, I should bring my prepared remarks to close by reminding all of us that an active law enforcement investigation is ongoing. However, I do want to take questions from you related to the actions that the county has taken. I'm going to end as I began. I am sorry that as an organization and a community, we find ourselves where we are. It was neither by design nor by intention with any policy choice made by our elected officials or the operational decisions made by me. As I said, I acknowledge the difficulty of this situation. And I thank you for the opportunity to offer that response to you and our community.
Mr. Zappel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, thank you for that overview. I think it'd be helpful, I know to myself and to some of our other commissioners who weren't here, back in 2019, I guess it was, when we had the New Hanover High School shooting and came to a collective thought that we needed to do something that was different and something to address the community violence along the way of community building. The question I have for you is, I know that we did a large search before we came up with Port City United. And one of the, I guess, sources of this is the Cure Violence Model. Could you refresh us again where that came from and how that came to us here in New Hanover County?
Yes, sir. And the shooting was in August of 2021. And from that time through January of 2022, the county staff did work with members of our community, as I said, parents, the nonprofit community, those in law enforcement and others, to develop a set of policies for the board to consider. It has often been framed under the working title of Port City United, but there were other things that the county initiated beyond what currently fall under the direct supervision of Rashad Gaddison. As I recall, the first discussion of the Cure Violence Model actually was presented in the joint meeting that the city, I'm sorry, the county and the school board had within 10 days of that shooting. And it was introduced as an idea predicated on the work that was happening then and continues to happen in Durham. And so, we were introduced to it through those discussions, recognizing, and, and I believe some of those that made the presentation reference, that I, I might would find myself, if we pursued that path, and the board might would find itself hiring folks into the organization that it didn't think traditionally met the, the parameters of county employment. So, we met with members of Bull City United, we, we met with members of Cure Violence Global, which is headquartered in Chicago, and recommended to this board mediation and outreach as one of the divisions of Port City United. It also, as I noted, included the PCU Connect Center and the Community Resource Coordinators that are funded by the county, but those are actually housed, those personnel are housed within three nonprofits in our community and work in those 10 schools. Mr. Zappel, I hope I answered the question completely.
Almost. One of the things that impressed me, though, was the recognition of the Cure Violence Global has throughout the United States, but here in the state of North Carolina, in some form of formal certification. Could you expand on that?
So, there, there are other units of local government that are administering programs predicated on the Cure Violence Global model, DERM. As an example, I'm afraid if I began to recite others, I would be wrong and assign them as operating in spaces they are not. But this is not the only publicly supported, and by that I mean in a, a local government perspective, locally supported Cure Violence set of interventions. Whomever is operating it, I can say is operating consistent with the standards given to those units by Cure Violence Global.
And is it recognized by our state Medicaid program?
It is. Yes, sir. Not as part of Medicaid expansion. Not as part of Medicaid expansion that Judge Corpening spoke to, but some years before that, the state moved to capitated or managed care for Medicaid state dollars. Cure Violence Global is the strategy that is endorsed by Medicaid funding as the violence interruption tool to use if, in fact, a local government is going to explore it. I should note for reference, New Hanover County does not bill Medicaid for its program, but it is, yes, sir, an eligible expense as part of capitated managed care.
So, it's a very recognized, you know, program and one that is established in other areas. It's not something that we made up?
No, sir. I don't know that it is well-recognized across the state. I'm sure there is policy discussion in every community where it is. I don't know that it is understood well across the state, but as a matter of state policy, I believe the answer to your question is it is deemed an evidence-based
Yeah.
...tool for interrupting violence.
Thank you. One additional question about the career technical, excuse me, the Community Resource Coordinators.
Yes, sir.
It's a really interesting, and until this incident, I must say that I had a kind of a larger understanding of it, but not in the details. Could you fill out some of the details of what exactly do these do? Are they, do they work, they work in our schools? Are they teaching classes? Or what is their interaction with the youth that have been identified as at risk?
Yes, sir. To your point, each of the Resource Coordinators work in one of our ten public schools, and they have an identified caseload, if I could use that phrase, either by the school or by another resource, as children who, not necessarily difficulty learning, because we're not doing tutoring, it's not math, reading, and arithmetic, or math, reading, and writing, I guess it is. They are helping children, if someone who is in the eighth grade or in the eleventh grade has a problem with attending school, our Community Resource Coordinator will help get to the root cause of why. Is it the condition in the school? Is it bullying? Is it that your mother is sick and needs medical care? And it is the Resource Coordinator's job to ensure not only the student, but the family is connected to the resources in our community. That's one illustration. What was identified in the community-building process and very clearly identified by the students and the faculty in the schools is there can never be enough trusted adults in our school system, and there are things that perhaps some students are not going to be comfortable speaking to their teacher about, or their guidance counselor, or their principal, or an SRO. But if it's someone that they know and trust, they'll build and establish a relationship and begin to share what challenges in life may be. And so, we started out in four schools, I believe, in the first year, and expanded it at the school system's request to ten. More people were not added, but the protocol and the need across the system suggested we needed to be serving more schools.
And is it supported by the principals and the teachers of those schools? Or what, is there a way to gauge their support of this?
Yes, sir. We did do some surveying of our schools, actually the original cohort of schools, to determine the effect of and whether or not it was important to continue those services. And I believe at different times over the year or so, that information has been shared with the board. But as it relates to Community Resource Coordinators, the evidence seems to support that, yes, sir, they are providing a value add, again, not in the teaching of math and reading and writing, but in helping the school system provide services to individuals, but also to the family unit from where these young persons come.
If I hear you right, the CRCs are very much supported by the school system, those that are on, in the schools and are seeing the work that they do on a daily basis.
So, Mr. Zappel, if I represented that it is something that the school system, its policymakers, its senior staff completely endorse, that was not my intention. I think there is space to have that discussion. What I can say based on the evidence shared with us is that the principals and the staff find value in the work that is being done. That's the only thing that I could say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chris, thanks for your update. You know, like Commissioner Robert Bark and Commissioner Zappel, I was here at the inception of PCU. I actually had phone conversations and Zoom meeting with the Director of Bull City United to get insight into their program, and as the gentleman shared with me that he was probably the least likely person that Durham Police wanted to be in charge of that program because of his history with violence and gangs. But in the end, they recognized the effectiveness of the program, where the city of Durham and their police department brought additional resources to bear to hire more people to work in this department, because they saw how effective Bull City United was with the work they were doing in helping reduce violence in their community. This is a community that I was raised in, as my father was born here and raised here. So, I've seen this community change and grow in a lot of ways. Growing up here, I didn't really recall a violence problem in our community, but times have indeed changed. First, I want to speak to Mr. Barnett. And as I shared with you, you know, we're always presumed innocent until proven guilty. And, you know, I've talked to enough people that are close enough to the conversation to believe that this man will probably be exonerated down the road. We know that we had another individual that was in the same situation, charged pretty much with the same charges that worked at PCU a year or so ago, that as soon as this person was charged, they were immediately fired. But then the charges were dropped or dismissed. But there was no leave or no attempt on behalf of county staff, to my knowledge, to bring that person back and make them whole within the county system. The court ruled they did nothing wrong, but we fired them anyway. But there should be a presumption of innocence until proven guilty, whether in employment as well as in the court system. Because what we're dealing with is people's lives, people's reputations, people's families. It runs deeper than just this thing here that we're doing today, because it affects real people. Decisions that we make affect real people. My dad would often tell me, "Son, you never kick a man when he's down." And when you see someone that's struggling, you never know what their story is. And I'm hoping that between Mark Franklin and his team, that we'll revisit our policies on separating individuals, in my opinion prematurely, giving people due process. You know, oftentimes you find individuals that will get put on administrative leave, pending an investigation, but not just rush to judgment based on what policing does. And I know that there's been a challenge with law enforcement here with PCU and some of their members for a while now. And just like it was in Durham, I believe eventually the tide will turn to where law enforcement will fully embrace the work that is being done. But I've seen these men and women do tremendous things in our community. For me, the violence interrupters, they are doing very dangerous work. There's work that Jonathan Barfield is not equipped to do mentally or physically. I mean, imagine yourself going into a situation where you're trying to de-escalate a violent situation. I want everyone in this room to imagine yourself in that role. And you're in a community where you don't know who has what strapped to their hip, waist, ankle. For your job, you've been hired to go in and de-escalate situations. See, that's the work. And you find yourselves sometimes jammed up in the work. And if you're given someone the role of interrupting violence, and you understand that that's the work, I think you stand by them until they've been proven guilty. But going into a community where you don't have a badge, you don't have a bulletproof vest, you don't have a gun to defend yourself, but you're going in to stand in the midst of, to intercede on behalf of a county to prevent violence from taking place, that's a pretty big undertaking. And I want everyone in this room to imagine yourself in that role. See, I know that I couldn't do it. I took the jail once with Jason Thompson, and I realized I'm in this pod with individuals, and I have no, our deputies have no weapons whatsoever on them. A little intimidating for Jonathan Barfield Jr. It would probably be intimidating for a lot of the folks sitting on this desk, as well as folks who are sitting out here in this room. So, I try not to rush the judgment on many things and many people in many situations, so I at least had the opportunity to absorb some of these things. But I've watched these men and women in action and work, and they have really brought a sense of wholeness and peace to our community. Think it's a fresh start initiative or the Second Chance Initiative, I may be messing it up, where they've held an MLK Center, opening the doors for folks to get expungements done, but also connecting folks with resources has been invaluable. The work they did with the folks in Creekwood is they were displaced with mold in their homes, and helping those folks find transitional housing and move furniture and get food and get clothing and get furniture, to me, was remarkable. And to me, the department itself has done a tremendous job in bringing a sense of wholeness and community. I'm a little disappointed with the Santa Claus choice that they chose this past year. I thought it had a really great Santa beard and had a nice new Santa outfit, but even providing Santa Claus for some of our youth during the Christmas holidays, you know, is touching a different part of our New Hanover County community. And so I'm hoping that people would withhold judgment until a full investigation is done and someone is even proven guilty or proven innocent. But I know that the court of law that Judge Corpening resides over, I think the rule is innocent until proven guilty. It's never been guilty until proven innocent. And I'm hoping that we'll take a look at our policies with HR to address the situation, not just for PCU, but for county-wide employees that may find themselves accused. You know, there's recently someone, people sue people all the time. You can bring a lawsuit against anyone for any reason that you want to. Doesn't mean they got anything. This is the right that we have in America. In the law enforcement system, we've seen a number of cases where folks have been arrested that were innocent. I think Mr. Robinson, Frank Robinson, I'm sorry, had a gentleman here a couple of years ago at his banquet that was on death row for thirty-plus years until DNA evidence proved he was innocent. Things happen, both ways, things happen. So, I'm hoping that we'll take a strong look at our processes there. And in the meantime, I encourage you guys to be with your investigation and deliberation.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Manager, I want to recognize something that I don't know is getting sufficient attention in this dialogue. I'll premise all of my comments on, I don't have any special knowledge, but I have read the reports that you provided to us, I've read the media reports of this event. There is a young person who is apparently paralyzed for life as a result of this shooting. I want to begin there. This program, this department, Port City United, began as a result of a tragedy, a significant one. But I would make clear that I see what happened a couple of weeks ago as an absolute tragedy. And if the tragedy of 2021 spurred us on to create a new county department, I would argue, sir, that it is incumbent upon us to use the moment of this tragedy to evaluate our practices and determine whether or not the services that we're providing to this community, well-intentioned as they may be, are in fact doing the things that they were intended to do, and that the public furthermore is getting a good return on its investment. There are some details that I think bear repeating. Yes, it is, let me mention, I am an attorney by trade. The concept of innocent until proven guilty is essential to me. But I am not up here on the dais wearing my attorney hat. I am wearing my county commission hat. We are not the court system. We are not law enforcement. The individuals of law enforcement, the prosecutor's office, public defender's office, private defenders, they have a role to play in this analysis that is different from the one that we have to play. We have to make policy decisions about where we want to spend finite dollars. So, over the last two years this program has been in existence, whatever the intentionality may have been from the funding sources where we paid for it, how primarily have we paid for it up until this point?
We have, Commissioner, used a variety of funding sources. I think it would be fair to say that the county has chosen to use American Recovery ARP funds as part of COVID relief to fund a fair bit of all of the things within the department and those other support services that I mentioned.
And is it accurate, I'm sorry to ask it in this way, but is it only till the end of this year that those funds will be available for us to utilize for this purpose?
There are varying conditions on the federal rules. If it is personnel that is directly employed by New Hanover County, we have to expend all of those funds by December the 31st of this calendar year.
And so, I'm sorry, sir, please, continue, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
And if there are contracted services, those funds, assuming they are available, can be expended up through December the 31st of 2026. And so, depending upon the line of service and whether it's funded with ARP, will have bearing on whether, if it continues, does the general fund assume it? If there are ARP dollars available and it's a contracted service, are those still appropriate to use?
And if we were to continue funding the department by whatever means, we're going to have to go to the local taxpayers to come up with the money that's no longer going to be available through the ARPA funds. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And if, I may add, when the proposal was presented to the board, the board acknowledged that if it was going to continue to support some or all of said services, it would be, to your point, sir, a policy choice as to whether or not to absorb it as part of a going concern or the continuation budget.
So, I suppose that in some ways, this conversation was inevitable, even independent of this tragedy. We were going to have to confront whether or not five of us who sit up here could come to an agreement on whether or not the continued funding of this program was a policy choice that we could all live with or we all thought was best for the county.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, my view on this unfortunately is going to be informed by the facts as I understand them, and I think that our brand, Port City United, the brand, has taken some pretty significant hits since we first launched it. Had to let our first director go under not-so-tougherific circumstances. And we didn't really detail this, but I'm going to detail it. The allegations, and yes, they are unproven at present, but we have to take the allegations that we have available to us, are that our employee, using a county vehicle, drove an individual to a site, that individual shot another individual, attempted to murder him, then drove the person who attempted to murder another person away from the site, and apparently lied to law enforcement about it afterward. I will leave it to the court system to make a determination about whether or not those -- about whether or not those allegations are in fact what occurred and whether or not there should be a conviction. But I think that we have more than sufficient information to make the determinations that we've made at this stage. It is our first obligation to ensure the safety of this community. And I do not feel good about the safety that we are providing with the policy in place that we currently have. It may be unpopular for some, but I can tell you that I have received more phone calls, more emails, more encouragement from random members of this community since I first said that I had serious reservations about the continuation of this program as it currently exists. And I am going to charge the Board of Commissioners with a reevaluation of this program as it currently exists. I do not think that it is doing what it was intended to do. I do not think that it is at present making the community safer. And I do not believe that there is sufficient return on investment that has been demonstrated such that we can continue on with this program in its current form. It's not something that I'm happy to find myself saying, but we are in a precarious position at present. And the liability for the county, the potential risk to the general public is such that if we don't act, I think we are making a grave error. Those are not questions posed to you, these are my comments. I don't need a response from you in connection with it. But we cannot continue on this current course. The current course is not acceptable, to me, but I am just one of five. I will advocate for the policy preferences that I think are best for this community. And because dollars are finite and because I have heard from members of our school board that they have funding needs, it is my strong policy preference that we utilize available funds from concepts like, for instance, Port City United to instead, instead, fund our students, fund our teachers. That is where we should place our policy preferences. We should be investing in proven concepts. We should be investing in our long-term proven institutions like our schools, like our law enforcement, not experimental concepts like Port City United. If there are aspects of Port City United that are worthy of being saved, I am open to that discussion. But at present, all that I know is what I know, and what I know ain't good. It is time for us to do something different.
Mr. Chair, just a few comments. Chris, thank you for updating us, uh, and all along with this situation. Let me just say, I don't want to say a whole lot because none of us know what exactly happened that night or is a pending investigation. I do think though that for the public transparency is the key. We must always let the public know everything that we know. That said, I just want to say it's a shame in our community, and not just in New Hanover County, all around the country, that young people think that shooting each other is the key. And, and that's something that they should be doing. It's just, um, it's just something that is a tragedy in our community. And, and thank you, Judge Corbin, for your comments tonight, uh, which I think addressed some of that. And none of us know the, the right formula to success for this problem. Um, I think it has to start in the homes, it has to start, um, within our schools. What I'm questioning though is, I know that Port City United has done some really good things. I, I question the job title of violence interrupter. I have to ask myself, what is the training for that person? What is the certification? When I think of a violence interrupter, I think of police, people who've undergone certification and training and, and a, a lot of psychological evaluations for how to address different situations. And I, 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 I ask you that question, you won't have to answer it, but I ask you to think about it. We asked a county employee to put themselves in between that violence. And, and, and that is quite a job title that I'm not sure that, um, that. I, I certainly wouldn't want that job title. I know our, our, our officers, we've got a lot of them in the room here tonight. I mean, they have dedicated their, their lives to that and to that training. So I, I think about that, I mean, what does that mean when you interrupt violence? So there's a lot to that. Um, I, I don't know the answer to this. I do think maybe we, there should be some thoughts about how we could rework it. I am concerned about the funding. I'm concerned about, um, I think the price tag was seven million dollars. You'll have to answer that for me. Um, I know we have funds to the end of the year, but not moving forward. So I, I'd like to talk about, not tonight, but maybe in our budget workshops, how we can keep pieces and take pieces away and, and maybe still work with our school systems and put that puzzle together that works best for, um, everyone involved.
So we don't, we don't, we, we don't have to make a decision right this minute?
No, sir. I'm, I'm not asking for, we're making a, a recommendation on policy choice for the board.
Okay.
I, I, I agree with Leanne. I think this is something that we need to discuss at the budget meeting. Take a little while out for that, if everybody else is okay with that.
Mr. Chair, I just had one follow-up comment. I know that we've been given some information that's put together by the, uh, Port City United, as well as the manager's office as well. And I think it's, it's worth repeating a couple of these data points here so the public gets a, has a way to put some of this in context. With the mediation and outreach specialists, uh, in the past eight months, they've had fifty-two team interventions, that's since July of two thousand twenty-three. And these were all conflicts that were at immediate risk of violent actions within the team's primary focus areas. And in the past eight months, the same mediation and outreach have opened up one thousand seven hundred and forty-one cases in the first eight months of this fiscal year. That's up from one thousand one hundred and twenty-five that they did during twelve months of last year. Clearly, there is some good happening here within our community. And we have a, one very unfortunate and miserable tragedy that has happened here. But I think it was worth repeating some of these statistics because, uh, Port City United and the mediation and outreach team is doing a, a lot of good that is documented within our community. And you can see the overall instances of, uh, violence, major violence, have leveled or actually gone down. Now, is that all a result of the action of PCU? No, I'm sure that it's the good work of our sheriffs, our police department, our judicial system, all that working together. But it's one of the legs of the table or the stool, or I've forgotten how many legs we got here. But it all works together within our community to make it stronger. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure that we had some of a broader view there as we move into our discussions at another time.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, may, may I offer just one response to Commissioner's apples, um, observation? If, if reading, and I'm not at all suggesting that's, that's what was conveyed. I, I want to make sure no one on the board read any of the reporting, and, and this is a fact sheet that is now made available to the public, that our report is trying to demonstrate anything about any of these programs is the reason that some, something has happened. So we, we are just sharing with you the volume of activity. I, I don't like to focus on inputs and outputs, but the reality is this is an input-output report to demonstrate the involvement of our mediation and our outreach coordinators in the community. Not, not at all to suggest something's gone up or down as a result of the, the work.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll reiterate that what happened in Houston Moore is, is the work. It's the work that they've been asked to do. And I mentioned before that it's, it's dangerous work. In January of twenty-two, in Baltimore, Maryland, an individual doing the same work, a violence interrupter in the same model, was killed while working. But it's the work. And in that work, you're going to encounter situations like what happened in Houston Moore a few weeks ago because that is the work. And either we're going to be in the work or we're not going to be in the work, but that's the work. And I think we all, as a community, need to understand that that is the work that we've asked these individuals to do, to go in and, again, diffuse situations and put themselves in the middle of situations. Law enforcement at its best is reactive and not proactive. The judicial, judicial system at its best is reactive and not proactive. You can have all the laws on the books, but you can't stop an individual from making a decision to do what they put in their hearts and minds. And that's why we have prisons, because people have made decisions to do something that's against the standards that we set in our laws. You can't have a police officer with every citizen in our community to determine, to be there to stop things from happening. I often say with my children that as far as I know, they haven't done X, Y, and Z because this book I read says that I don't even know what's in my own heart. And it's impossible for us to know what's in someone else's heart as well. But if I don't know what's in my own heart and not me, I can continue what I may do tomorrow. But as far as I know, that's all I can go with. And so again, the work is dangerous work. We've had, and we've asked individuals to put themselves in that space. And I'm going to say it again, Jonathan Barfield is not equipped to do that work. But I'm grateful to the men and women that are doing the work on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is committee meetings, committee appointments. First, New Hanover County Endowment.
Mr. Chair, my pleasure to nominate Mary Lyons-Rouse.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Next is New Hanover County Hispanic-Latino Commission, three vacancies, three terms expiring, four thirty of twenty-seven.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, um, re-nominate for reappointment Andres Afondo, Afondor, Joseph Casares, and Chalk Lambeth.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, next is Southeastern Economic Development Commission. We have two vacancies, one at large, one executive.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate James Branton and Brian Ford.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is for at large and which is for executive on?
That's right, I'm sorry, Kim.
I would motion to have James Branton to be the executive member.
Okay.
Brian Ford in large.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
And the Healing Place in New Hanover County, more directors.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate for reappointment, Takima Young.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I think that's it, isn't it? You got anything?
Chairman, uh, the board, I think we kind of, I'd like to update y'all on a matter for city council. Yes, sir. Commissioners, I, I definitely rate it the best practice to introduce, um, non, non-calendered items before you. But, but I would like to ask the, the board to consider giving Jordan and I the authority to attend the city council meeting tomorrow night to present in what I believe could be well-accepted by city council. And the city manager is here not to speak for the council, but certainly to help me if, if I misconvey anything. But we, we did attend and the city council expressed its interest in finding resolution with the city whereby, if the county ever sold the property where the grocery store is identified to be constructed, or if it ever ceased to be a grocery store, then in fact the county would convey the then appraised value of the property, the unimproved property, back to the city for it to make determination of how to use those proceeds. I, I did not express any authority on my part to ask for anything other than the reversion clause to be eliminated. I had shared with each of you individually that I thought that could be a path forward based on discussions between the city manager and I, and expressed that I would communicate that position to, to the board, hope to receive direction and would appear tomorrow night to continue our ask of eliminating the reverter clause and/or representing the board's interest and willingness to accept the outline as offered. I, I do believe Jordan has already prepared a draft document. I shared with the city manager earlier this afternoon, the summary I gave to you following the council agenda review. And so with that, I probably should stop talking, let others answer the details, and then take board guidance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chris and, and Jordan, thank you all for your diligence in this. I think the solution that you all came up with was a win-win with Tony Carlo and this minimum of city council. And I want to reiterate, uh, what, what I've read and what I heard is that, um, uh, if indeed this property ceases to be a grocery store and the county decides to do something other than a grocery store with a property, then we would get the land appraised. And that whatever the appraised value, just the land itself, not including the building, just the land itself, we would give that amount of money to the city to maintain complete ownership of entire parcels. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
For me, that's, uh, to me, that's a win-win. My anticipation is that this grocery store will not fail, but will indeed succeed and do extremely well in that part of our community as there is great demand for it. NIC is a way for the partnership to continue with the city and the county as we're both making an investment in, in, in fulfilling a promise that we also made to the citizens on the north side of our community that we would help build a grocery store. I saw incorrectly reported on the news that the food co-op went on the building, but the county went on the building, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. This manager, as I previously indicated via email, I think that this is a reasonable compromise. I would encourage you and Jordan to please work out the details of whatever process by which we would determine the appraised value so that there isn't an open question as to what that looks like at, hopefully, the point that this never happens. But it's better for us to have a plan rather than have to scramble for a plan at some point in the future. So let's just pin down as many details as we can, repeat my hope and recommendation.
Yes, sir. And, um, it may be a perfect segue to Jordan in his draft document that actually would be considered by the city. He does address the appraisal process. And so I'm happy and should defer to him to, to talk about the document and the mechanism.
Yeah, I'll be happy to. I, I shared my draft with, uh, city attorney Meredith Everhart. Haven't had an opportunity to hear back from her. But as proposed, the appraisal mechanism would allow the city and the county to jointly agree on an appraiser. If that does not happen, that would allow both entities to get their own appraisal. Um, and we would average the two to be the value. In the event that there was a fifteen percent deviation between the two appraisals, the two appraisers would select a third appraiser and, and that third appraisal would be final. That fifteen percent number, um, is certainly subject to, that was just a number thrown in by me and staff. That number could be changed either by y'all or the city. That's just, I mean, at this point, a, a starting point, if you will. But that's, um, the appraisal mechanism in its current form.
I think that's a very reasonable proposition. Thank you, sir.
And I'd like to tell the city manager, thank you for working with us. And I'm sure Chris and, and we'll pass that on to the rest of them more likely. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, if I might also reiterate that, Mr. Chairman, I, I do want to thank, uh, city manager as well as the members of city council for their partnership. This is something that I do believe will be meaningful for the community, and I'm glad that we're doing this together.
Yeah, Tony Carlo, I hadn't told you lately, I love you.
Mr. Chair, first of all, I, do you, do you need specific action from us? Do we need a vote, uh, for you to, to go there?
I, I, I don't think it's necessary, but I think it only adds clarity because it's ultimately changes that the city's going to be making on its end. But changes that the city's going to be making on its end. But for me to be able to express the board voted in whatever makeup it is of the proposal as presented, I think goes a long way.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one more thought. First off, city manager, Tony Cottle, thank you very, very much for being so open and willing, you know, to work with us to get through this so this thing didn't become a bigger issue than it already had. So thank you very much. Also, just a quick comment. I think that those of you who are close followers of this commission may note several new items here, that our new monitors, our new public speaking platform, and also a new movable dais, our podium that we have here, too. Those are and new speakers around the whole room. I just wanted to say congratulations to our communications team, Josh, I know that Josh Smith, and Sarah Warmuth, also, our facilities manager. And I'm sure I'm forgetting or don't know of the many other talented people that have worked to make this happen, but it's a huge.
Commissioner Zappal, would you include IT, and I think, including the clerk's office? You have hit all of the contributors.
So far off. And Kim, thank you very much. And Melissa, it is a huge improvement and improves the audience's experience and our experience up here as well. So thank you, thank you.
Ms. Newbarfield?
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank our park director, Tara Duckworth, for opening up our most recent park, Hanover Pines. I called her today to let her know there's one design flaw in the park that I found. The parking lot needs to be triple the size that it is. Took my wife and my grandson out there for a walk this weekend, and what I saw was a parking lot packed full of folks, with individuals so appreciative of having a park close to their neighborhood. And it's just really great to see the families out there, the kids playing on the playground, the kids running inside the aisle and enjoying that, and the folks walking and running. But we need a bigger parking lot because that place is a hit already. So Tara and your team, your entire department, your entire department, thank you for the great work you're doing in our community.
But they did get the plaque in the right place, right between the men and women.
Yeah, the plaque's in the right place.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I, just in the spirit of hopefully ending on a very good note, I do want to congratulate you on delivering a very nicely done state-of-the-county.
Kind of you to say that. I don't get that very often. Ms. Crowell, do you have anything? This meeting is adjourned.